We have a quorum. Just find my agenda here. What do I do with it? Oh, here it is. Okay, it's 7:03 and we're going to get started. Are you ready back there, Dan? All right, Kathy? Off that? Okay. I would like to call to order the February 9th, 2023 Meeting of the Waukegan Planning and Zoning Commission. Can we have a roll call, please?
Anderson?
Here.
Bill?
Here.
Griffin? Grimes?
Here.
Haug?
Here.
Hints?
Here.
Rivera?
Haynes?
Here.
Rodriguez?
Here.
We do have a quorum, and I'd like to say I'm very happy to see we didn't scare away our newest member. She actually showed up for a second time. Okay, item two, approval of the minutes. These are the minutes of the January 12th, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Haug?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Bill. Any comments, corrections, changes to the minutes? None? Roll call vote, please.
Bill?
Aye.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hints?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. I'd also like to just recognize all our planning and zoning staff that are here tonight. Just really good to see all of you here. We have more planning and zoning staff than we have members of the community, so. Did you want to? You may, please.
And I've got to say that even in the short time that I've been working with them, you've got a great team. You've done a good job assembling this team. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I could not agree with you more.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, item three, audience time. This is an opportunity for anybody here that would like to address the commission on any item, whether it's on the agenda or not. As we get into the agenda items, those are public hearings, and we will have an opportunity to have the public weigh in, ask questions, make comments, and so forth. But this is an opportunity to address the commission if you want to address them on any item whatsoever. Nobody? Okay. Moving on, old business, item four. I don't believe we have any old business to discuss. Okay, item five, new business. First item on the zoning calendar, item 5.1, zoning calendar number 2696, is a request by the City of Waukegan for a text amendment to the 2020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan incorporating a list of reference and supplemental plans that support and amend the 2020 plan. Who will be presenting? Oh, I see who's presenting.
I'm already here again.
You certainly are.
Noel Fisher-Luther, Director of Planning and Zoning. So this text amendment would take the comprehensive plan document, the 2020 Comprehensive Plan, the Michaela Rule document, not working in here either. It says it's on. I'll just try talking real loud. How's that? Workable? Let me try this for the safety of the recording.
Is that better?
Much better, yes.
Goodness.
What do you think?
Sorry. I'll tone it down a little now.
Please, no.
So most of you were on the commission when we approved our 2020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan. Some of you were even on the steering committee for that plan. Thank you again for that participation. So one of the things that you may recall from that process is that this plan incorporated some of the sub-area plans that were previously approved by the city, like the downtown lakefront master plan, the river road corridor plan, the Washington Street corridor plan, those kinds of things. And they were incorporated by reference but not specifically listed in the document. And I think it would be helpful for people to know and be easily able to find which plans are part of this. So the goal is to simply add a page that would be, I believe it will be, nope, I'm sorry, not before the mayor's message. Anyway, early in the document, maybe it will be before the mayor's message. I didn't mark the page on here. I have all sorts of other markings, but not that. Maybe it will be this page before the mayor's message that would be replaced by this language in the text amendment that says that this plan includes this list of documents, which are the ULI Advisory Services Panel, Urban Land Institute Advisory Services Panel from 2002, the Lakefront Downtown Master Plan from 2003, the Waukegan Design Guidelines for the Downtown and Lakefront from 2005, the Washington Street Commercial Corridor Plan from 2014, the Lakefront Active Implementation Plan from 2015, the Beach Management Plan from 2016, the Sustainable Shoreline Plan from 2016, the South Sheridan Revitalization Plan from 2016, the River Road Conservation and Community Development Plan from 2017, the Northern Lakeshore Trail Connectivity Plan from 2020, and the Waukegan Sustainability Plan from 2021. So that one that postdates this plan has already been adopted by ordinance as an amendment to this plan, but that list would be included in the document. And then as we approve other sub-area plans or active implementation plans, those kinds of things, project plans, whatever that we want to incorporate into the document, we will add those type, plan titles and dates to the list so that going forward, it is a live document, and people can always reference those documents directly and understand that these are part of this plan. So we think for clarity and transparency purposes, it's a good addition to the document.
So basically, all that it does is put, lists all the documents, puts them in one place, so it's easy to cross-reference.
Yes.
Basically.
That's exactly it.
Okay.
Thank you for the succinct explanation.
Do you have the, yes, Commissioner Haynes?
Since I was not part of the group, and I don't have that document, I did look online, and so are you saying that that would also be online with these links that you have listed here?
Yes.
Okay.
And all those plans are already online also, but we'll put the links into the document as well.
And where do you find those plans currently?
On this.
Each name into the?
You can do it by searching them that way, but if you go to the city's website, to the planning department's page, there is a button that says plans. Most of them are there, but back on that button, on the list, there's one link for sustainability, and that last sustainability plan is under that link.
So the 245-page document that's online, that I believe is probably what you have in your hand?
Yes.
Doesn't necessarily have these in that right now. They're separate?
They're listed as separate plans, yes, and they appear as separate documents. So in narrative form and through the, you know, inside the document, in different ways, they're referenced, and during the approval process, they were discussed a lot, but it isn't called out where it's just in black and white. These documents are part of this, and we want to make it more clear that they are still part of this.
For people who don't already know the?
Right. So for people who weren't part of the process and didn't hear those discussions, including my staff, who wasn't on board at the time, right? So it just makes it easier for everybody to understand what is in and what isn't.
Commissioner Anderson?
Noel, can you refresh my memory? I think we got rid of overlay districts, which were in this, in the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
That's not correct. So the Unified Development Ordinance that we're currently working on proposes getting rid of overlay districts. That will still come through this body before it's formalized.
Thank you, because I was getting confused. Can you tell me where the plan for Fountain Square is going to reside? Or is, because that is currently an?
It's an overlay district, right. So it's not a separate plan document. What that overlay district does is it modifies the permitted and conditional uses list. It's a B2 zoning for the district. So just like every other B2 district in the city, there are certain permitted and conditional uses. What the overlay district does is it restricts the uses, so it limits the, it makes a shorter list, basically, of permitted and conditional uses, so that some of the things that are allowed in B2 districts elsewhere in the community are not allowed in that particular B2 district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Because I was wondering where that was.
It's a lot going on, and you've been on both steering committees.
Well, yeah, and I'm getting confused, I think.
I understand. Sure, no problem.
Anybody else? Okay, I'd like to ask if there's anybody in the audience that has any comments or questions would like to ask questions to the city or of the commission? No? Okay.
Chair? If I may?
Yes, sir.
Just want to make sure that the commission is aware, one of the important things that the addition of the various supplemental plans to the comprehensive plan will do, as it relates to this commission, is if you look at your standards, for instance, for your conditional use, number six would be that the proposed conditional use is not contrary to the objectives of the comprehensive plan for the City of Waukegan. And so to the extent that there are additional objectives that are listed explicitly in one of the supplemental plans, but not necessarily in the Waukegan Comprehensive Plan, it allows this commission to look at those supplemental plans, because now it's all one thing, and that brings it officially under your purview.
Thank you. Thanks for that explanation. Okay, if there are no more questions or comments, I'd like to ask for a motion.
I so move?
Motion by Commissioner.
To approve the text amendment to the 2020 Comprehensive Land Use Plan incorporating a list of reference and supplemental plans that support and amend the 2020 plan.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson to recommend approval.
I'll second.
We have a second. Seconded by Commissioner Grimes. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hints?
Yes.
Haug?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Really glad to see this happening. This just makes things better and better.
Thank you.
As we go along. Okay, next item. Actually, there are three items. There are separate zoning, three different zoning calendar items, but they're all for one project, and I'm going to read them all, and so everybody knows what they are, and I'm going to ask that they be presented as one item, but when we vote on them, we have to vote on it as separate zoning calendar items. So item 5.2, zoning calendar 2697, which is a request by the petitioner, Benjamin Gonzalez and Freddie Lopez, for a variance on the minimum lot size requirement for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District for the location known as 928 10th Street. Item 5.3, zoning calendar number 2698, is a request by the petitioners, Benjamin Gonzalez and Freddie Lopez, for a variance on the minimum parking requirement for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District for the location known as 928 10th Street. And item 5.4, zoning calendar number 2699, which is a request by the petitioners, Benjamin Gonzalez and Freddie Lopez, for a conditional use permit for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District for the location known as 928 10th Street. Who will be presenting? Okay, are you the only one?
There'll be fourteen of us.
Okay, then what I'd like to do, I'd like to swear you all in. If you could just rise right now, raise your right hand. Anybody that's going to be speaking or answering questions. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All answered in the affirmative. I'd like to ask you to please come up to the podium, make your presentation, and as you do, please give your name and your affiliation to the project, and also anybody that speaks. Do we have a sign-up sheet on the, at the podium? We do? Okay, I'd like to ask that anybody that speaks, sign your name on the podium so we know who you are. Just makes it easier for us to add it into the record afterwards when we have correct spellings.
We're here because they have a auto repair business that's been?
Your name, please, and your affiliation.
My name is William Ochoa. I apologize. My name is William Ochoa. I'm an accountant for Chevrolet Lewis Tax Services, right over here on Sheridan Road, and the gentleman behind me are my clients. They have had a auto repair business at that location for about 15 years. The prior owner of the locate, of the building would submit business, the business, sorry, I'm nervous, I don't usually do this very often, the business license for the Gonzalez Auto Repair. When that owner passed away, the new owner did not know of that arrangement and was not renewing the business license, and it just got lost in translation where they thought it was happening when it wasn't happening. So when it went to renew the business license, it wasn't under, it wasn't grandfathered in any longer, and that's why we have to do the conditional use permit. One of the issues is parking, I believe, one of the variances. They don't take in too many vehicles. They don't park on the street. They do have about 11 spots in the parking lot, nine on the, altogether, regular spots, and then they also park vehicles in between, but they never really get to that capacity. They have an issue also with square footage, where it's, because it is a smaller location. They utilize the parking spot outside, and then they have one lift inside, so they can park vehicles inside if they need to, but it's only the two of them usually working, so they don't, they can't take on too much work to begin with. So, yeah. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Any questions for any of the commissioners? Okay, I understand that there are three spaces in the building, three tenants. Is that correct?
I, I, I believe there's a restaurant there that's open from Thursdays through Sunday, and then, and then like an Herbalife shop.
Okay, and they're all sharing the same parking spaces?
They don't share those same parking spaces. Yeah, that's usually, that's only for the auto repair.
Parking in back?
Correct.
Okay, how many parking spaces are there in back?
11 altogether, but that's only for the vehicles.
In the back lot?
And, but, yeah. No, there's 11 in the back, and then there's four inside.
Four on the side?
Inside, inside.
Four inside, so 11 in back, four inside, and there was also mention about the parking spaces on the side?
They don't park on the street. They just had drawn, drawn that on to the, to show there's parking on the street, but they don't park, they don't need to park on the street.
Okay, I'm talking about on the apron, on the sidewalk and apron. Isn't that, isn't that going to be used as part of their parking?
On the, no, just the parking lot in the rear and inside.
Just the parking lot.
Yeah.
So they have 11 spaces in back, and how many more inside that they can use?
Four.
Four. Okay, which probably would be taken up by vehicles?
Correct.
That are being repaired, right?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay, the ones that are being worked on, plus the ones that are also waiting, and sometimes, sometimes vehicles are taking up space inside while they're waiting for parts and stuff like that, and they're working on other vehicles, so they're going to only have four spaces inside?
They only have four spaces inside. So the vehicles that aren't being worked on, they will sometimes put it on, in the parking lot in the back, but they don't usually have to do that, because if they have it for more than, if they have it more than two weeks, they tend to ask the client to pick it up.
Okay. Do the commissioners have any other questions?
I do just have a question, and this might be more for Noel. I've seen in other parking issues that there needs to be some sort of landscaping and greenery requirements, and they refer to that in this, and their only space that I could see is the garden space that they list on this drawing, which I believe is actually the parkway? And isn't, is that the city's property, the parkway? And so is this considered acceptable for that greenery requirement? No?
No, that, that's correct. It's the parkway, so that belongs to the city. I'm not sure why they included it as a garden, but that's not part of their landscaping. The landscaping has to be in their property, in the back space, as they consider a parking lot.
And so with the 11 spaces in that parking lot, is there a landscaping requirement with 11 spaces?
Yes. That would be five-foot buffer from the back on the alley, 10-foot buffer from the Victory Street, and for every 10 spaces, require 150 square feet of island. So what you're seeing will be reduced by that square footage of the landscaping that's required.
So is there a plan, I'm asking the gentleman, is there a plan for accommodating that requirement?
It's not complete yet. There is a, I know they were trying to figure, one of the questions was whether it's a tree or a bush or something like that. I don't remember exactly. I completely forgot about it. They did bring that up with them at the prior meeting, and they'll have to figure that out to approve it. Yeah.
I mean, it seems like it's going to reduce the number of spaces that you have, and we're already on the verge of not having enough spaces.
Sure, yeah. And, I mean, they don't tend to use all the spaces to begin with.
And is the thought that if they were to lose a space, or I'm not sure how this would actually be implemented here in terms of what, how it would affect the number of spaces, are they comfortable, based on their business that they've had for 15 years, that whatever spaces they end up with after this, that would be sufficient?
But. They can still operate and be fine.
I mean, this is only my second hearing, and I know that it was listed in previous agenda items that were brought up here. I'm just curious as to, it's not listed as a condition here in the report from the planning and zoning. I'm curious as to why it's not listed in here.
It's condition number 19 on the conditional use permit.
Well, my intent is not, certainly not, I, a small business that's been doing business for 15 years there and seems to be successful and a good neighbor, I'm certainly not trying to kibosh anything, but I feel like it's something that, being a new member of this commission, that if we're trying to maintain uniformity, that something should be at least discussed.
Sure.
Any other questions of the petitioners? Commissioner Anderson?
Parking in the back, is that a surfaced area, or is that gravel, or what's the surface of that parking?
Yes. It's asphalt.
It is asphalt.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, is there anybody else here who would like to speak out or ask questions of the petitioners? Okay, in that case, I'd like to ask the city to give their position.
Isabel Guadarama, planner for the Planning and Zoning Department. As I was stated, this property has three businesses, one what seems to be retail, the other a restaurant, and the, what they're proposing, a car repair shop. I have listed in the, in the report how many parking spaces are required for each use. When a proposal comes in to us and goes in front of you, we require parking for all the businesses that are taking place in this property. So it is required that the other two businesses have parking for their use. So this use would require six parking spaces, since they have two bay doors. The restaurant, we count it by chairs, so they are requiring two parkings for that restaurant, and the retail requires four parking spaces. What they are proposing, and what they've talked about, is that they have parked in the apron, which we don't allow parking in, so that's not actually a, an allowed space for parking. I have also looked at the area in, around it, in the streets, and there's also no parking signs on 10th Street in front of their store and on Victory, I believe, that street. So they are required to provide parking for all three uses, and that comes with the small size that they have for the lot. So for the conditions, we, parking is our main concern, SF, since they are requiring, as I pointed out in number 19, they are requiring some landscaping for the parking lot. I was not aware of the parking inside the building, so we were not counting that space, those, I believe, four parking spaces inside. Number 12 focuses on the no parking in the right-of-way. No repair vehicle shall take place in, outside the building, so all, every, our repairs need to be, happen inside, and we have a condition number 10 stating that no vehicle shall be stored more than 30 days in the parking lot. And currently, they do have some permanent signage that we would like for them to take down and apply for a permanent signage. So those are the four main conditions I wanted to point out. North Chicago did reach out to me. They were not opposing or for the business, but they were stating that, and I'm not sure if they've had issues with them in the past, but they did state that they wanted to reiterate that there is no parking in the streets, and if they do park on the south side of 10th Street, on the side of North Chicago, that police will ticket and tow all cars that are parked there.
Okay, we have this letter from Nimrod Warda, which I'd like to read into the record. This is a senior planner from the City of North Chicago, and he's, this is an email to Isabel. He says, hello Isabel, we here at the City of North Chicago neither support nor object to the auto repair shop and related variances at 928 10th Street. From the looks of things, the property was previously used for the same type of business. The key will be to ensure the owner clearly understands that public streets can never be used for the storage or staging of broken-down vehicles. As such, if any such vehicles are found on the south side of 10th Street, in other words, the North Chicago side, our police department will immediately have them ticketed and then towed away. Should you need any additional information or comments from me, feel free to reach out at your earliest convenience regards. Nimrod Warda, AICP Senior Planner. So they expressed concerns, but he's not opposing or, or supporting the project. And I'd like to ask, can you just tell, summarize for me? How many spaces would normally be required, based on the three businesses and the size of the, of the facility and so forth? How many would normally be required?
For car repair shops, it's three parking spaces per bay. They have two, so that would require six. For restaurants is one parking space for every three chairs inside. I believe they stated they have around four, five, and retail space is five per 1,000 square feet of floor area.
That's how many altogether?
12, I believe.
And how many do they have?
It's not consistent throughout the application. If you read the application, it ranges from, I believe, 10 to 11. The site plan inside the part, what they consider the parking lot is around eight, and then they included the outside parking. So I'm not sure, I don't know if you want to confirm that.
You're saying, you're saying eight in the back parking lot rather than 11?
That's what I counted, based on their site plan.
And then they're including the three on the apron, is that what you're saying?
And they're included some on the apron and then the alley.
Where they're not allowed to park.
Correct. That's an apron. Cars are not allowed there, mostly because it does go over the sidewalk, and there's no parking on the sidewalk.
So in other words, they should have a total of 12, but they have eight?
What I counted on the site plan, yes.
Okay.
Not counting the four inside?
But they have four inside, they said.
That's counting, that's counting the ones inside.
I was not aware about the inside, and I don't know if they mentioned it in the application. I didn't come across it.
Eight plus four.
Where are the eight?
In the back.
Eight, there are eight in back outside. That's what you said you counted?
That's what I counted. They did not include the inside parking.
Okay, so eight plus four, so in other words, with that, they would have the required amount of parking spaces?
Yes, but they're still missing the landscaping that would reduce the amount of parking spaces. Yes, but they're still missing the landscaping that would reduce the amount of parking spaces in the back. Um, that's at least one parking space, um, just with the 150 square foot island. Um, and then the buffer of five feet from the back, and then off of Victory, 10 feet. So that's reducing a little bit more.
Okay, so if they lose a parking space for landscaping, then they're at 11?
They're 11.
So they're very close.
Correct.
The city maintains the garden that's referenced on there?
It's the parkway. It should be just grass and, um, all, um, ape, or, uh, where am I? I'm sorry? Yes, they need to maintain the parkway.
Do any of the commissioners have any other questions for city staff? Mr. Hints?
So, I'm, I'm trying to link up the other businesses and how they relate, I guess, to this, right? So there, the auto repair shop, they, I, I don't think own the building, or they, they do own the building?
He, he owns the building.
They do own the building, okay.
So these gentlemen not only own their business, but they own the building?
One of them owns the building, and one of them owns the business.
Oh, okay, okay. Cause what, I guess what I was trying to get to is, we're holding them to the restaurant
and the retail space parking, but in my mind, they were the auto repair shop, but it's because they're, they have to reapply for that building, essentially? Is that, is that the requirement?
They would have to apply for the conditional use permit for the use in that property.
In order to get a business license?
Correct.
In order to get a business license.
Yeah, restaurants and retail are permitted in the B2 district. It's just not the car repair shop that's a conditional use.
Okay, got it, thank you.
But, and so you have, they have been operating this business for 15 years, and the only reason that they're here is because there was some snafu prior to that they'd been grandfathered in and been running their business as it is currently for the last 15 years.
It was grandfathered in, um, it was pre-zoning ordinance, um, so they were grandfathered in for the use. Um, unfortunately, they were not paying for their business license for a few years, and normally it's, we permit up to six months, uh, for the grandfather use to be allowed, um, or granted. Um, they surpassed that six months, and now they have to go through this process to comply with the current-
It's just a technicality, just the fact that they didn't renew their business li, the business license. They didn't know they had to, and, uh, other than that, they'd be grandfathered in, they wouldn't have to be going through this process?
Correct.
Okay.
And now we would have to, um, have them comply with the current zoning ordinance, including the landscaping ordinance.
Any commissioners have any other questions for city staff? Mr. Anderson, you look like you're gonna say something.
Well, I just wanna say this is a case study, in my mind, for how, um, how businesses apply for business licenses and relation, you know, their relationship and responsibility with the city. And, you know, it's a case study. Um, in my mind, business should be making the application, not the owner of the building, um, and, and we've got a situation as a result of that, a business not making that application. Somehow, I, you know, we have lots of small businesses in town, and, um, that's the backbone of commerce here. Somehow, we have to get the word out so we don't have, or we're able to get people into compliance like this. So I, I just, I, I just think that it's a, I don't think this is the only business that's in this situation. It's one that's been discovered, and how do we communicate with businesses, the importance of city codes and licensing? That's all. It's, it's, it's a comment. It's not, it's not-
It's not a judgment.
Anything other than a comment.
Anybody else?
One quick, I guess, do, do we have, if we're evaluating, um, the, the business's ability to, um, not endanger public health, safety morals, um, do we have any data on how they have performed as a grandfathered business? So do we have any complaints, I guess, is what I'm asking, about the business?
Code says no.
Code says no, okay.
Great.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else here who would like to ask questions of city staff? All right, and, yes?
Um, I don't have a question, but I do wanna make a clarification on the, uh, application, or a, at least the, the staff recommendation. Um, so you might recall, uh, some of us back in October, I think we did amend the, uh, we made a, a text amendment, which was approved by city council to reduce, uh, square footage for garages from 15,000 to 7,500. Um, that would be the, the minimum requirement. That was for B3s, this is a B2. And so the request here, um, in as far as the minimum lot requirement variance is a variance from 15,000 to 6,750. Um, i- I only bring it up because it's a little bit more of a variance than perhaps what is listed. Uh, however, it is still within this commission's ability to approve. I, I read over the, the variances that this commission is allowed to recommend to the city council. I think this falls under B to permit the use of a lot or lots, uh, for use prohibited solely because of insufficient area or width of the lot or lots. So there's no, uh, percentage requirement. For instance, you can only go down 25%. Um, there's nothing like that. Uh, and then there's a catch-all as well that allows the, a variance, essentially for, for any variation, um, as decided by the city council. So if there's a variance that this commission wishes to approve, uh, they can send it, send it on to city council, even if it's not one of the variances allowed specifically by 3.84. Um, like I said, the, the entire reason I bring it up is just to make sure that, uh, the commission is aware that the variance for the lot size is a reduction from 15,000 to 60, 6,750, which is still within this commission's ability.
I think the fact that they've been in business for 15 years and, um, have been able to maintain their business without any code violations, um, even though that's a very small square footage, I guess I tend to look positively on this variance. Um, it, it's just, it, it's historical more than anything else.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I can't resist saying something. I mean, I, I can't disagree with you more. I mean, I, I, I should say, I agree with you tremendously because, you know, what's gonna become of this property if we don't approve it? I mean, it's, nobody's gonna get this property. It's gonna be a vacant piece of property in our community again, and these people are hardworking people for 15 years, doing a good job, you know, serving the community, paying their taxes. I mean, I don't think we should be discussing this. I think we should just say, absolutely, let them go ahead with this. I mean, th- these are good people. These are the type of people we want in our community. So I, I completely support it, and I hope you all do too.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Mr. Chair, should we just confirm that the, they're okay with the conditions? I don't know if we asked them that. I could ask them, I guess.
Yes, um, the, um, city staff is, are not making a recommendation regarding whether they recommend approval or not, but they are, they do, uh, give some conditions, that if this is approved, they recommend certain conditions, and what I'd like to know is if the petitioners have read the condi, conditions, if they're in agreement with them, and if they believe that they can, um, live with those conditions and fulfill those conditions.
Yes, they can.
They can, they can live with those conditions. Okay, thank you. All right, anything else? All right, and we're gonna take these one by one and vote on them separately. The first one is zoning calendar number 2697, a request by petitioners Benjamin Gonzalez and Freddie Lopez for a variance on the minimum lot size requirement for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 commi, in, in the B2 Community Shopping District, uh, at location of 928 10th Street. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion of approval for zoning calendar 2697.
Motion-
With the conditions stated by the city.
Okay, are there conditions on that one?
Well, by square footage. Well, that's the lot size.
Yeah, I don't believe that has, that has any conditions.
Okay.
Okay, this emo, a motion by, uh, Commissioner, uh, Bill to, uh, recommend approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Hints. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Bill?
Aye.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hints?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Next item, 5.3 zoning calendar number 2698, is a request by the petitioners Benjamin Gonzalez and Freddie Lopez for a variance on the minimum parking requirement for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'll motion to recommend approval for zoning calendar 2698, a variance on the minimum parking requirements for an automotive repair shop.
Motion by Commissioner Hints to recommend approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, does that, does this one have, uh, conditions?
Just the next one.
Just the next one, okay. Just the next one. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hints?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. And the last one, item 5.4 zoning calendar number 2699, is a request by the petitioners Benjamin Gonzalez and Freddie Lopez for a conditional use permit for an automotive repair shop at 928 10th Street in the B2 Community Shopping District. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve zoning calendar 2699 with, um, the staff recommendations, conditional on the staff recommendations.
Motion by Commissioner Anderson to recommend approval of zoning calendar number 2699, subject to the conditions recommended by city staff. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Commissioner Grimes. Any further discussion on this motion? Roll call vote, please.
Bill?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hints?
Yes.
Hoag?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes, motion carries. Congratulations for this.
Good luck, guys.
When I swat it, so, okay.
Chairman, do you have the date of the next meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I do. The next, thank you for reminding me.
You're welcome.
You prepared this for me, and I forgot about it. February 9th, Planning and Zoning Commision Agenda Items. The next item, uh, next meeting will be the Community Development Committee meeting, Monday, March 6th, uh, sometime between 5:00 and 6:00 PM in this chamber. Put that on your calendar, Monday, March 6th. And you'll be, you'll come before the Community Development Committee. All right. Thank you very much, and good luck with your project. Okay, uh, nothing else under new business? Okay, next item is adjournment. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Yes, sir.
We have a information item for you.
Oh, okay, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Thomas Maynard with Planning and Zoning, as well as the mayor's office. Um, as a request of this, uh, this commission, uh, regarding the item related to 208 North Genesee at the, uh, following the last discussion related to some concerns and complaints of that location, uh, this commission asks for some additional data on any follow-up incidents or, or data that we could provide to, um, to note of, you know, to note to this board. Uh, I'm happy to report that the items you'll see both are for any police call runs related to 200 block of Genesee, as well as ones that are specifically for, uh, 208 address. Uh, while you'll note that there are things that, that list as type, uh, type of, uh, citizen contact, uh, what that actually means is that our police department went in there on our initiative and, and found no issues. So, uh, at, at this time, we are proud to, we're, uh, glad to say that we have not had further issues since the, uh, last, uh, time we spoke with.
Good, that's good news.
And I've, uh, I do have another item to bring to you in this same tone. Um, as, as some of you may have seen, a report, uh, at the end of December, there was a reported fight and, uh, shots fired at, um, outside of the People's Choice, uh, site at, uh, 2650. That is a item that has a, there's a location that has a conditional use permit through this body. Uh, we had asked police to, uh, provide a report, a call run, uh, which spans from April 1st, 2021 to, to the present, and, uh, that item, that, uh, information is here for your review, and we will follow your lead if you seek any further, uh, action on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
First by Commissioner Grimes, second by Commissioner Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Meeting is adjourned at 7:49. I told my wife I'd be home by 8:00.